Good evening, everyone, and welcome this beautiful evening. I call to order this June 18th, 2024 Hybrid Special Administrative Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners to Order. Commissioner Benson is excused, and we do have a quorum. We will have a moment of silence and followed by the pledge led by Commissioner Barboia. Please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements and additions? Commissioners, are there any changes to the agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
And moved, and I'll second that. All those in favor? Say an aye.
Aye.
And that passes. So, I am so pleased today to welcome you all and also the top three candidates of our search for our next county manager. We have a two-hour period scheduled, but what we would like to do is start with the first hour, allowing each of the three candidates to get up to the podium, introduce themselves, what they would like to, you know, whatever they'd like to say to us today, maybe five minutes or so. We'll give each of you about 20 minutes, you know, which is generally an introduction, and then followed by questions from the commission, and then we'll go to all three, and then we will open it up for public comment. Not questions to the candidates, but public comment, and the commissioners will continue to ask questions and we'll do a final closing. So if that, if everybody is amenable to that, we're going to go in alphabetical order. So the three candidates are Cindy Chavez, Marcos Gonzalez, and Joseph Lassard. So we will begin with Ms. Chavez. Please come up to the podium, yes, thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm delighted to be here, and I'll just take a quick couple of minutes to talk about my background and to say thank you to my family who's come to cheer me on here today. So I come to you from San Jose, California. I currently serve as a member of the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, and I chair the Valley Transportation Authority, which is our regional transit entity, our integrated transit services in the county. Prior to that, I was the executive officer of the South Bay Labor Council, where I represented 110 unions and over 100,000 working people, and I directed a think tank called Working Partnerships USA. The focus of that think tank was to support policies and develop policies that were focused on lifting up working families in our community. Prior to that, I served as a member of the San Jose City Council and vice mayor at that time, and also chaired the current transit board that I sit on. I am bringing all of that experience and enthusiasm to apply to be your county manager. Part of the reason for that is while I was born in New Mexico, I was thinking a lot about what I want to do next. I'll be out of office in December, and really what I want to do most is find a place where I can do good with a team of people who are ready to change the world, and that's really how I think about public service. And I was also thinking a little bit about why New Mexico. You know, this state has given me a great, a great deal in part. I have, my parents came from here, and they came and imbued myself and my brother and sister with amazing values, generosity, community building. They expressed love and dedication by volunteering for a church and their union, and I learned that if you are part of a community and you benefit at all from it, you're obligated to give back. I'm really looking forward to your questions this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez.
And then we answer questions?
Yeah, I think if you would just stay.
Just stay there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'll open it up to questions from the commission. Commissioner Barboia.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy Chavez, for coming out here on this short notice. Thank you for applying and stepping into this. I asked you a lot of questions our first round about behavioral health. I want to ask a little today about unions. So Bernalillo County, right, has to work in partnership with a lot of unions. Public employer unions can be stable partners to our local governments, promote work plan improvements, ensure delivery of high-quality services, as well as reduce inequity, as well as in race and gender disparities. What are your values and experience in working with unions? And the second part to that, and I want to really ask for your values and experience, experience is one thing, but what are your values around working with unions and your approach? And then the second part to that, can you commit to fair union negotiations, union negotiations that include, you know, pre-vetting any of our lawyers or people that, in those negotiations for so-called union busting?
So having served as the head of the South Bay Labor Council, and I chose to work in the labor movement in part because when I was a kid, I knew when we had my, I say "we," like we all had a union job, but when my dad had a union job, because that's when we had health insurance. So when I graduated from college, one of the first, one of the first jobs I had was actually working in the labor movement, and I was training, I worked for the Organizing Institute of the AFL-CIO, and I went around the country and trained unions on how to bargain, how to organize both in their, you know, for contracts, but also in the political realm as well. My values are that, that unions are important because they create fair bars for all of us to operate within. And I'll just give you an example. In the county of Santa Clara, one of the things that I'd asked for was an equity study because I wanted to understand if we were paying women differently than we were paying men. And one of the things I found is at every level where we had union representation, we saw no difference. You started to see a difference in areas where there wasn't union representation. And my aha from that is that the equity that gets created in there is really important. Now, one thing I will say to the labor movement and to my union partners, and I've done this many times, is that we also have an obligation, union members, to bring excellence to the workplace, to be driven, especially when you're paid with public money, you are obligated, obligated, to do your very best to improve the lives of the people you're serving. And sometimes that means uncomfortable conversations because we have to figure out how to do things differently or better. And what, the last thing I'll say about this is that my, my aha from all the years that I've worked in the labor movement, I helped negotiate contracts on both sides of the aisle, the most important thing we can do is deeply and meaningfully engage the people who work for the institution. They have great ideas. They see things we don't see, and for the most part, all of them want their jobs to be better, they want to provide good services, and sometimes we don't listen enough. And I think, to me, it's not having an open-door policy, it's really, are we deeply engaged with the people who provide the services for our community? Because if we are, we're going to get the very best out of them.
Commissioner Olivas? Vice Chair, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much to all the candidates for being here and making the trip out of California. You have a very impressive resume. And one of the questions that I want to ask today is, really points out, I think, the stark differences in my district specifically. Commissioner Barboia and I might have a little argument about whose district is more urban, but we've got probably the two largest urban centers in the city of Albuquerque in our respective districts. I've got Uptown and the Northeast Heights, so very urbanized, a lot of density. And I also have the sort of unique role of having the most rural part of Bernalillo County as well. So the East Mountains, very different community. We have two, the two of our last seven active land grants out in that community. We have just incredible diversity out there of spirit of ideas, of people, you know, fire risks out there. We have incredible challenges around water and access to clean, reliable, safe drinking water out there. Infrastructure is huge, roads, water drainage, all those kinds of things, right, are huge issues in that part of the district. And I just sort of want to, you know, hear your, your thoughts, your, your ideas on how you strike that balance, right? Because we do have to provide services to those rural communities that are relying on us because there is no one else, right? We're, we're the county, and there is no city, there is no town. In most cases, there's a couple very small ones, but we're sort of the, the first and last line of defense out there. But at the same time, you know, we have a balance to strike where we have this huge urban center with a lot of taxpayers that, that are experiencing their own challenges, right? Crime, homelessness, substance abuse, all these kinds of problems. Not to say those are immune in those rural areas, but it's a very different set of problems. How, how do you see yourself as county manager, striking that balance between that urban-rural divide?
So there are two ways to answer that question. One is that the board, the commission, all of you prioritize where our, you know, very finite resources go. So much of this is how all of you prioritize what you want the emphasis and focus to be. But the second thing I'll say is that I think it's really important that all of our institutions be able to do more than one thing well. And what that means is that sometimes you have to start small to address issues in communities that, that need more support and services. And I'm going to give you two examples. In, in the community I live in today, about a third, even though it's very urban, I, I represent the poorest, and we have this debate on my board as well, the poorest area in our community, the most compact, the most diverse. And I represent the east foothills, where we had wildfires a few years ago, where you could see them coming into the valley, Silicon Valley. What that meant for us is that I worked very closely with our allies in the firefighting service and with the state to draw down more money, and went and lobbied to get more money to make sure that we could create the defensible space, and worked closely with not just our, the county fire department, but, but more, the city of San Jose's as well. So we were really building out that defensible space. In addition to that, I had an initiative where, when purchasing equipment, dozers and other things, that we would train both departments irrespective of who owned the equipment, so we were able to maximize and leverage those resources. At the same time, I'm leading a fentanyl working group that is largely focused on young people because that's where we're seeing this emergence of, really of death in our communities, to focus on how we get Narcan out to every place in the world, and really educating parents about what their children are buying online that's getting mailed right to their homes. We're doing those two things at once, starting small, leveraging our partnerships, and digging deep so that we can solve those problems right at their roots. That, that's, and I think, but, and I think we have the capacity to do both. Talented staff do that. And then going and getting more money.
Use that.
So Madam Chair, are we able to ask one question, or can we ask a couple, or?
Go ahead and ask a question. We have 20 minutes for each, so we can continue.
Because one of the questions is really important in my district, you know, my, my district is the most populated unincorporated area of Bernalillo County, probably the largest agricultural community in, in the district and in Bernalillo County. And so when I knocked on a lot of doors, as a commissioner, and to this day, the big ask is, how are we going to create opportunities, jobs for those communities with keeping in mind how important our water, limited water resources that we have? And what kind of industries would, would you look at in places that have been historically kind of inundated with polluting types? So that, that's my district, right? We have this big agricultural now area with, with the most intense polluting industries all in, in one location, and how would you navigate providing jobs for them, but also looking at our natural resources?
Yes, that's a really good question, Commissioner, and if, you know, one thing I would, I would just ask you, could you give an example or two of the types of companies that are located there?
So, you know, we're famous for asphalt plants, concrete companies, auto salvage yards, huge auto salvage yards in the area. So those types of, of what we've kind of been battling, we have asthma at a higher rate in, in those areas. There's just a lot of data that says we got to move in a different direction, but I still have to look at, you know, as a child of, of coming from poverty, my fight has to be for opportunities and jobs, because that's really the solution, I think, in the long term, if we're looking at, you know, opportunities and steering our children away from substance abuse and falling in the wrong places, because we come from neighborhoods where we don't see a future, we only see prison and death. And I'm asking the next county manager to look at it differently and look at what the hope would be and not what we've been sold.
Yeah, that's an excellent question, and I know I had a chance to look at some of Mr. Gonzalez's accomplishments in that area, and they're pretty amazing. You know, one of the things that I did as a, and currently, I, I served on a board called the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, and one of the things I, that, that that board focused on is really how we could invest in a really disciplined way in new and innovative technologies that were, that were clean and green. And so what we did was, actually at my direction, we created a technology implementation office. We went out and we worked with the California Infrastructure Bank. We got $30 million that we were able to leverage to attract and to, two things, to attract companies, to be able to come into particular areas that were, have, you know, smelting and other kinds of really toxic, noxious companies, and to start to push these new companies in to take up that area. And what was interesting about it is we accomplished a second thing that we almost did by accident, which was it allowed us to feature these types of companies and show them off to other public sector entities that could become consumers for that particular product. Now, it's about three, now, maybe about four years old, we're, we're at that 30 million mark in terms of investment, we're starting to see these companies take hold. And so what I would want to do is really work with the community deep, understand what their visions and priorities are, and then take a look at what can we leverage to attract people to invest here in clean and green technologies? And there are so many, AI and other things. Now, the point you're raising, which I also just want to acknowledge, is that a lot of the jobs can be focused on, you've got to have a high school, I mean, I'm sorry, a college degree, an advanced degree, but there are so many emerging technologies that don't require that. And working, and this is something we're doing too, working with our community colleges, we're getting people the certificates they need without forcing them to do things that, that they don't need. For example, we have a shortage of people who know how to do, who are mechanics. We have all this new green technology, people don't know how to work on it, so we've married a college with one of the boards that I sit on to be able to start to do the training, and it's, they're incredibly good-paying jobs, even in an area like ours, which is almost like impossible to afford to be able to pay for rent. That's what I would want to do in partnership with you and the community.
Thank you. And wow, I'm having a little heartburn asking you this question, but this has come from a couple of the elected officials, and I wanted you, you know, and I didn't want, I want you to be able to answer this question and not them answer this question for you, if that makes sense. So Ms. Chavez.
I bet it will in a moment.
Yeah, you're, you're currently looking at suing the county for not hiring you. Would you graciously accept if the decision here is not in your favor? That's, that's what was sent to me, and I thought maybe because people are researching you, that I wanted to give you a public opportunity.
Yes, so I, I'm happy to take a moment to explain that. I was offered a job to be the executive manager at the county of San Diego a little over a year ago. They reopened the process, and I went through the process a second time, and I was not given an interview, and that, and that was fine, that's their choice, just like it's your choice to make a decision. What happened after that is that one member of the board, in conversations with others, was discussing my ethnicity, I'm Mexican-American, and Chavez is my name, and using that as a reason to not hire me. Now, normally, when something like that happens and you're in public life, and people write all kinds of things about me, and I've got very thick skin, I don't even read it anymore, but when that kind of thing happens, I felt really obligated to weigh in because that shouldn't happen to anybody. That, you know, when you're speaking about people, especially when you're in a hiring process, you have to be thoughtful, respectful, and mindful that what you say matters. Now, if in fact I do decide to pursue a lawsuit, I will just tell you that I would not be asking for any resources for myself. They have a number of communities that have need out there, and I would donate it, but I do want them to understand that my expectation is that people be treated with dignity and respect, and especially, we have a higher obligation when we tell the public we're representing them.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Chavez, you're from New Mexico, but you will be coming in to Bernalillo County if you were to be offered the job from California. How, we have heard from some public saying, you know, that, hmm, we really would rather, you know, look really closely at anybody coming in from outside. How will you build a team coming in from outside of, of the county as a county manager?
Yes, thank you for the ques, thank you for all these questions. You know, I, I believe and have had the experience that in order to do good work, we have to listen very carefully, we have to be engaged, and we have to think about all of our work in really collaborative ways, meaning that we have to listen and understand the priorities, hopes, and dreams of each other in order to find where we can work together and really move the community forward. So what would I have to do coming in? I would be having a lot of coffee with folks, I would be doing ride-alongs with every single type of work that, that people who work for the county do. I'd want to do a ride-along with each of you in your communities and eat at your favorite restaurants, although as elected officials, you probably aren't allowed to have one favorite, but you can choose. And, and I recognize that this would be an opportunity, frankly, for me to bring fresh eyes to the environment you're in with a deep understanding of the community here. And that would be the obligation, frankly, of any of us, is to get, dig deep and get to know the community in a real and meaningful way.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez, appreciate that. So we are at the, about our 20-minute point, and so I'm going to stop there and allow the, the next candidate to come forward, and you'll be able, after public comment, you'll be able to do a, a brief closing at the end.
Great, thank you, and thank you for your questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Marcos Gonzalez.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Marcos Alejandro Gonzalez. I'm currently honored to serve as the Executive Development Officer for Bernalillo County. Throughout my career, I've been deeply committed to leveraging my expertise, dedication, and strategic vision to enhance the quality of life, uplift our culture, and honor our natural environment here in Bernalillo County, our state, and our region. I've worked for Bernalillo County over the past 12 years, initiating changes for our community from a business lens, working hard hand-in-hand with internal departments, not limited to public works, finance, behavioral health, housing, and many external stakeholders and partners. My roots here in New Mexico run deep with a focus on service and implementation. I've dedicated myself to the pursuit of making our community a better place to live, work, and thrive. If selected as the county manager, my primary vision is to lead Bernalillo County to become a model county, not only for the state of New Mexico, but for the region, the US, and for the entire country. And we've already been doing this in economic development. I aim to take a strategy and that's centered around growth, sustainability, and apply that approach to how our team administers behavioral health, corrections, and many other areas in the county. Evaluation, I think, is key. We'll take regular looks at what's working, what isn't working, and work with all of our processes and the entire team. We will document successful strategies and participate in peer-to-peer learning networks and actively share these insights with other jurisdictions on what we've learned. Additionally, I envision building trust between the county commission and the county team, because I believe in empowering the commission to share your vision of what you want for the county, and then being able to articulate that to the county team to be able to empower them to complete that for our community. Because when we work together, we're powerful and can be stronger together. My vision includes increasing also the Bernalillo County service awareness for constituents, promoting the good work that the county's doing and that's done by the team and by the commission, and uplift the great work for all our neighbors. I envision expanding social behavioral health programs, criminal justice, and economic development, working with our public and private partners. Finally, I will focus on building up infrastructure with a focus on behavioral health, affordable housing, and healthcare for the future. Because even if we had all the money we needed, the county doesn't currently have the roads, water, broadband, or sites ready that are to solve today's problems. We lack infrastructure and need to be strategic with our dollars and public-private partnerships and how we implement that infrastructure for the future. By focusing on these priorities, I am confident that we can elevate Bernalillo County to new heights, setting a standard of excellence for counties across the nation. Because together, we will build a stronger, more vibrant community for generations to come. Being that I not only live in Bernalillo County, but have also devoted over a decade of my career to working for the county, I believe I'm best suited to lead our county operations and work hand-in-hand with the commission and a strong Bernalillo County team and take our county to the next level. So thank you, and I look forward to the questions.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez. Questions? Commissioner Casada.
Yeah, you know, economic development is huge for me, and it'd be kind of unfair because that's what you do. I'll just say that you've done, you know, a great job in, in the unincorporated area of the South Valley, but I do have, I do have a question for you when it comes to economic development. So I, I live on the Southwest Mesa, which is in part of the city of Albuquerque, and, you know, there's a lot of challenges, what I call economic justice, that we're fighting up there, because there's a lot of lots up there where there was supposed to be businesses and jobs and opportunities for the people who live up in the Southwest Mesa. A lot of us love living up there, working up there, and existing up there, right? We only have so many bridges across the river, and as you all know, traffic is a big, huge problem for us, and so some of us actually just want to exist up there. But we've had a hard time navigating with the city in order to move that type of economic development for the Southwest Mesa. How would you solve that problem that we haven't been able to navigate for at least seven and a half years for me as a county commissioner?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Casada, the big piece is infrastructure, which is something that any economic developer's been preaching about the state, and what we've actually been working on right now with P&amp;M and some other folks on being able to really identify a lot of the sites that could be for infill development and to prevent a lot of the sprawl development that many of our community are not wanting to see. And so looking at those sites, identifying what infrastructure actually needs to be done, whether that be on the electric side, on the water sewer, gas, what have you, on the broadband side, and actually working with a lot of, with our state partners as well. I mean, we're likely to be in a state that has excess revenue and accessing that to deploy a lot of the infrastructure to make it so we can develop and have economic development. to make it so we can develop and have economic development and community development projects.
Okay. Thank you, Marcos.
Commissioner Barboa.
Thank you, Director Gonzalez, for making it and stepping into this opportunity. I really appreciate all the work you've done for the county and just want to thank you for that and thank you for stepping up. I, the question I want to ask you is still related in some way. So as you know, we run the MDC. We have many social safety net programs, like the Tiny Home Village, like the Resource Reentry Center, our CARES Campus and all the services there. What I hear most from folks that are seeking recovery, in recovery or, or mostly seeking recovery, is that they need meaningful work. And there's not often a lot of places where they could build a resume, get hired because of maybe their past record or because, for different reasons. What would be, in your area of expertise, what would be some areas, some ways that you can support workforce development for folks on reentry or in recovery?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Barboa, that's an excellent point. And that's something that we've kind of been focusing on now, especially with the fentanyl crisis, of looking at it through the business lens. And especially with a lot of business owners that have really good employees, but unfortunately have challenges in their life and how to actually get them to recovery to be able to still have them be part of the workshops. Looking at not only giving the business or nonprofit, whoever the organization, the tools that they need, but then also the individuals. And I think a lot of that as well is something before the pandemic, we were looking at is how do we also do a lot of the job training piece about how do you go to a job fair? How do you interact with a business when you go? And so we've had high success of that. So I think revitalizing a lot of the work that we were doing before COVID would be helpful with that and marrying it with our behavioral health programs and our justice programs. Because the best thing to reduce the need for a lot of those other programs is having people be successful in their sobriety and being successful in their mental health journeys. And I think that, and even in attending some economic development conferences, really looking at that this is really an untapped workforce because these people have to work in order to be compliant with their probation. Yes, exactly. And so how do we marry the two and be able to get those two together is something that we're being, we're working on and it's something that would push to continue that further.
Commissioner Olivas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Gonzalez, you know, I guess my, my question is, is going to kind of flip Commissioner Baca's last question to, to our last candidate on, on its head a little bit. You know, I ran, I, I am the youngest member of this commission elected in, in living memory at least. And I never really envisioned myself doing this at this point in my life. And the reason I got involved in this is because, like, like many of us, as much as I love this community with, with an absolute passion, I think there's nowhere better to be in this world. I'm really frustrated by the, the problems that we see. The, the crime in our community, the addiction, the lack of opportunity, the poverty. There's, there's a lot of problems. There's a lot of amazing things. And that's, that's why I wanted to be here, right? To be at that nexus of, of doing what you do well better and at the same time focusing on those huge challenges that, that bring us down and, and hold us back in many cases. It's not just here. It's, it's across the country. But I think we're, we're no different. We're certainly not immune. And just as I think it's a big challenge for someone from the outside to come in and, you know, be accepted in a large organization, a large diverse organization like ours, I also wonder the difficulties of being a, in quotes, an insider in the organization. How you see yourself being a change maker in an organization that you've really grown with, grown from and helped grow? How do you see this new role and, and your skill set allowing you, enabling you to, to really achieve some of those things that drove me into public service to try and find solutions to, to these big challenges? How, how do you see yourself affecting that change?
Well, Madam Chair and Commissioner Olivas, that's really the, the part of the thesis of my thesis about looking at what's working and what's not working. And just like you're asking of us of, well, if it's not working, we should be changing it. And that's the same thing, that just because we've always done something this way or the historical piece, the county's always been this way, doesn't mean we can't evolve and innovate. And I think that's something that the county's been known for is some innovation and flexibility. And so I think let's push that innovation piece further to how we can innovate and how we can partner further. Because while, I mean, frankly, within the metro area, more than half the state's population lives in this area. And MDC and behavioral health programs are responsible. That weight is on the county because something happens in Bernalillo County, the rest of the state reverberates. So how do we look to our other partners at the state and the city and making sure that we're effectively having great partnerships that are working and helping us push that momentum further for the county and for the residents of the county as well? So to also answer your question even further is like, I'm not afraid of change. I'm not afraid of pushing change. I'm not only afraid of communicating that effectively to the employees, to the community as to why change is needed and why, how it's going to be better and also taking in their inputs for that as well.
Thank you. Marcos, probably the oldest member of this commission, but who's counting in? Anyway, I, I, with that, I will say that some of you, or you may know, my, my history has been one in Albuquerque and Bernalillo County, excuse me, of building our, protection of our natural and cultural resources. The Northwest Mesa escarpment and protecting the petroglyphs, the bosque and protecting the natural features within the Rio Grande Bosque, the foothills. Some politicians say the West Side is open for business. Economic development is about business development on, on the West Side. My question to you is relating to both of those things. How do you balance development and creation of jobs, which is a good thing, with the protection of our natural resources, including the availability of water, which we know is a huge issue in the Southwest? And we, we really do need to have thoughtful process. How, how do you see yourself as a, as a county manager or as a leader in creating that balance?
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. And obviously, the first step to already be county manager would be to hire a really great economic developer. So, but in that is really being concerned about our natural resources. Are we attracting and are we talking to the right businesses that not only, I mean, it's great if a company's employing 2,000 jobs, but if it's not actually beneficial to the community and has the great community in mind, then it's not really an exact fit. So we need to make sure that when we're stewarding that and we're talking to the business community that we're actually doing that. And also it comes down to an infrastructure point of view as we're working on the Trisco Vista area for our I-40 trade port corridor project. We're looking at how can we build in a lot of that area that's already been zoned and enabled before we just start taking out other chunks? So what resources are we utilizing effectively and maximizing? And back to, relates back to Commissioner Casada's question with how are we getting sites that have been neglected or haven't been activated yet? How do we do that as well? And making sure that those sites also have the infrastructure to be able to have job creation. And then with that as well, it's if there are certain areas in the community that have been voicing their concern about pollution and different environmental items. It's like, how do we get then, it's really putting together a tactful plan with that economic development director as to how does the county then get very aggressive with incentivizing the businesses that we want to see there that are going to push or to have a cleaner community and be great for the community with job creation, but also the environment? And I think that we have the economic development tools on the books to be able to do that. But we can become more aggressive with that to attract the right business to the right area of the county as well.
Thank you. So we're at 16 minutes, so we have four more minutes. So we could ask a few more questions. Commissioner Barboa?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask your same question of the, your values and approach to working with negoti, with unions and particularly in negotiations.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioner Barboa. So a lot of that, being the county manager is delegating to appropriate staff and having staff that you can trust that are going to negotiate in fairly and in earnest with the unions. Because our unions do represent great men and women that do excellent work for the county from sheriff to fire to blue collar and white collar. So we do owe it to fiduciary duty to negotiate in honesty and making sure that we are getting, being great stewards of the county's taxpayers' dollars, but also being fair to our unions as well.
Any other questions? Hearing none? Thank you. No other questions?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Joseph Lassard, please come up.
Welcome. Assistant Attorney, Commissioner. Well, first, let me say thank you to everyone for attending. Thank you for having me come to your beautiful county, your beautiful city. I want to thank Bernadette Perez for her help the last few days. You have an amazing staff, so folks I've met are very impressive. Some of your questions to me are really how do you just keep the organization you have accelerating along the path it already is on? I'd like to talk a little bit about my background. Maybe I can help in that regard, moving the organization in the direction that you would like it to move, continue to move. I have a broad background. My, my education really was in, for local government. I, I left, I went to graduate school in Indiana to, to go into local government. I, I thought it might be the federal government, but it was just too big. It was too impersonal. So I, I ended up taking an internship and starting my career with the city of Dallas. I worked for the city of Dallas for four years. I rose from an intern to be an assistant to the city manager. And then I left the organization and went into the private sector. So I, I sort of have done my, my career in, in different stages. I have an interesting little bit of a, a private sector experience as well as public sector experience. From, besides Dallas, I've worked for the city of Austin. After I worked in the private sector for a real estate firm, a real estate development firm, I went back into local government, the city of Austin, Texas. I spent nine and a half years there as an assistant city manager. I oversaw a variety of city departments. I started out with Public Works, Environment, Planning, Economic Development, CDBG work. I had the, the planning to work for the new development of an international airport. We converted a military base and air force base into an international airport, Austin-Berkshire International. I also, during my tenure there, I also oversaw the city utilities, electric, water, drainage. The aviation department is a utility, Enterprise Fund. I was over the EMS, police and fire for a period of time. So I really ended up, through my nine and a half years, with a pretty broad experience in terms of local government. A lot of different issues that, that we addressed. And I, my particular expertise was in addressing priorities of the city council in terms of economic development activity or major controversial projects in the community. A couple of them was the development of the airport. The community went through three separate public votes before they finally resolved where it would go and, and passed a $400 million bond election for the, what turned out to be a three-quarter billion dollar project, including private, public-private partnerships for freight hauling. We dealt with environmental issues. Military tends to be exempt from a lot of environmental issues, but we had some auto quality issues we had to deal with and they were, we were able to work through those and open the airport on time and on budget. Also, worked on a habitat plan, 34,000 acre endangered species mitigation preserve, the first of its kind in the country for an urban area as well as for multi-species protection. We developed a, what turned out to be a first of a kind financing plan so that the city and the county did not have to directly have to fund all the land acquisition of the 34,000 acres. And that plan now generates, is a revenue source. It generates about $15 or $16 million a year to maintain, preserve system and to acquire more land and enlarge it. Now, most people wouldn't think of a mitigation plan for endangered species as an important economic development project. But the truth was, the growth, the primary growth area for Travis County was going west of the city of Austin. And so the mitigation became a very important item. And what we found is that the, that discussion about environment and protection, cultural resources and economic growth is a false dichotomy. The truth is, you have to have both. It, it, it really is, at least in my experience in Austin, was that without the environment protection, you don't have a brand. You don't have what draws growth, what draws investment to your community. The outdoors, the recreational aspect of it, the beauty of the hill country, those are all important characteristics of your economic development program. So it, it really is a false dichotomy. And when people start talking about this or that, the balance, the term you use is exactly correct. How do you balance it? How do you protect and accommodate the growth? I left the city of Austin after nine and a half years. I was pretty much stressed out from all the projects I was implementing. I, I was telling the commissioner yesterday that I had a knot in my back and a tick in each eye and I was, I had had enough. So it was time for a break. So I went back into the private sector. I worked for a land development company for a while. I did some more endangered species mitigation planning for a 4,000 acre real estate residential development in central Texas. And then I joined a planning firm out of Houston, working on a project to put a rail between the city of San Antonio and Austin, a $2 to $4 billion project. I was going up and down the corridor, working with local communities, cities, counties, community college districts to put together a funding plan to pay for the operation of the rail system. They had worked for a decade and hadn't had any success. I worked for them for six years and we were able to accomplish about a half dozen of those agreements that we needed for tax increment financing. The project collapsed when Union Pacific decided they didn't want to follow, to negotiate any longer. And so that project fell apart. So I continued, but I continued my consulting before I went to work for the city of Ashland, Oregon as their first city manager. Ashland is a very politically active community. I would say a divided community in a lot of ways. It's a community that is receiving a lot of California immigrants wanting to come up and retire just north of the Oregon border in, in a hill country or mountain, mountainous environment. And so the community has grown from about, oh, 16% seniors to about 31% seniors. And they, there is a very great divide in the community about whether or not they want to control expenses, preserve their resources so they can have a good retirement versus a historic activity in the community to be very proactive in terms of investing in innovative projects and the park system. I worked for them for just shy of two years. I, I think I've successfully transitioned them to the city management format government, from the mayor former government. And we were making a shift away from policy initiatives to really just implementation projects. And I felt it was a good time to have a conversation with them about changing the orient, the change in orientation with the city staff would be doing and whether or not I was the best fit. So we decided that they, they understood that shift and wanted to make the change. So we, we parted best of friends and I'm now, after taking a break and recovering, no, no ticks in my eyes, not in my back, but I'm, I'm ready for a transition to my next career experience. I'm very interested in Bernalillo County because I think it has a lot of the attributes of an organization that could use some of my skill sets. You asked a question about labor negotiations. I, I've been involved in twice for both cities. I've worked for labor negotiations. The first time, I learned to use the interest-based negotiation process. If you're familiar with negotiations, there are two forms of negotiation generally. There's interest-based and then there's traditional adversarial negotiations. When I was leading the city of Austin's approach to negotiations, we rejected the idea of using adversarial approach. Interest-based approach really starts with you having a dialogue on both sides of the table to talk about what you want to accomplish, what each side would like to see happen, what are the interests or the issues of each side of the table. And you draft statements that everybody can agree to, outlines what everybody would like to accomplish. And then you move into the proposal stage where you try to match as best you can in your proposals, meeting not just your side of the table, but the other side of the table what they want to see accomplished. And so you're really trying to come to that balance again. How do you make it work for both sides? Interest-based negotiations tend to be more successful, they're more successful. I find that that interest-based approach really is about finding out what, not just what the surface issues are, but what the underlying issues are that you're trying to accomplish. Quite often, when you see people talking back and forth in the media, they'll throw out an idea, this is what we want, well, this is what we want. And they're sort of negotiating with you through the media. Well, quite often, the solutions don't necessarily match up. They want, they're all, they're sort of, I want everything and I want everything approaches. What you need to do is get to the next level down and go, what really is driving you to think that's the solution? What's the underlying issues? And if you understand those, now we can craft a solution that really addresses the problems. And they may not be 100% what you want, but if you can get to a point where you get consensus, then you've got a sustainable solution. So, that's how I deal with management. That's how I try to think about team building. You engage, you have a discussion, you dialogue, you problem solve, and you try to be creative. And one of the ways I describe that process is you start at the top of the funnel. When you're at the top of the funnel, you're open to any idea. You're open to learning. You're trying to engage with everyone who has a stakeholder or has an interest in the discussion. And as you spiral down toward trying to get to a recommendation or solution, you start connecting the dots. What works, what doesn't work? I've learned enough now that I can sort of understand how to address issues. The team is gelling around different alternatives. And then finally, you get to a final solution, and that's what you bring forward to your governing body and say, this is the answer we've come up with, it is the best, in the best interest of all the parties, and appears to be consensus. Is everybody 100% satisfied? Probably not, because that's what compromise means. You have to make some decisions in order to get that 70 pence solution, and we'll come back and do the other 30%, the next go-around. So, that's how I work in teams. That's how I do problem solving. That's how I do labor negotiations. And I believe that sort of gives you the summary of my experience and maybe a flavor of how I work.
Thank you, Mr. Lassard. Questions? Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Lassard, you already answered all the economic development questions right up in your opening statement. So, I'll go to the texts that I'm getting from some of our elected officials. And again, it's another research-based question, but I'd like for you to have the opportunity to answer it. Question, Mr. Lassard, you left your position working with a city council, a city of 21,000 people because you felt the council was too toxic. How do you think you can manage a county of 675,000 with a severely divided commission?
Well, first off, let me clarify. I did not leave the city of Ashland, Oregon because of the toxic council. When I joined the council, the city, that was one of the issues they really needed me to address. Quite frankly, I think that was one of the primary reasons they hired me. When I had worked for the city of Austin, initially, the first five years, we had a divided council. And they had very strong opposing points of view. They were very verbal in the media about their opposing points of view. And I recall one particular time when the mayor hadn't been in, hadn't been between a couple of the council members, they probably would have gotten into a little bit of a row on the day. So, that's how divided it was initially. Over time, what you learn is that divisiveness doesn't get you anywhere. And that working collaboratively gets you solutions and gets you part, at least part of what you want or enough that you can move forward. And that's what that council eventually learned, that the folks who were negative on the council and were antagonistic with each other eventually found out that they weren't as popular as they thought they were because they were, they didn't have a vision. They didn't have an idea of where we were, where we were going to go. Ashland had the same experience. They had not adopted an updated vision for the city since 2012. And every effort they had had to try to do that interim before I got there, they had talked about it, they worked through it, and they never got anywhere. So, one of the first things I wanted to do was, let's get to a consensus on what a vision is. So, I went through all the visioning documents I had. I went through all the comprehensive plan documents, and I distilled down what I thought was a draft of an idea of what a vision for the city was, that I think really met what everyone wanted. And I presented it to the council, and they worked through it, and they adopted it. They also adopted a number of values, and then we went on to adopt a set of priorities for the next budget process. So, having a vision, a cohesive point of view of where you want to go is a very important item for an organization, particularly when it's large as a county. Your work in, your cop plan that you just recently adopted, the work in your budget process for your biannual budget, those are all very important, make sure that everyone is aligned, the commission, senior executives, and the organization. What happened in Ashland, actually, is that two of the members of the city council resigned. As the community started to shift and wanted to see more proactive development, two of them left, and we ended up with an election. We ended up out of seven with four new members on the council. And because I think we had a vision, we finally got to a common ground, that toxicity, that crisis that they were in started to dissolve. And so, I didn't leave because, I left really because I thought we had solved a lot of that problem. And the organization actually had had so many problems, they could not hire senior executives anymore. We couldn't hire the city attorney. We couldn't hire an HR director. We couldn't hire a finance director. They had tried three times to hire a finance director, and I think one HR director process and twice now for the city attorney. We filled all the positions except the city attorney. That wasn't my hire, that was the council's hire. They're still in that process. But they have a very competent acting local attorney who works there now. And so, I think a lot of the issues that were there when I went, I hope, I like to think that I was engaged in part of the process of having to resolve that conflict and get to a point where the community was talking census.
Thank you.
Mr. Borbul.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much, Mr. Lassard, for again coming and stepping into this opportunity. Really, thank you. I was really impressed with you in our first interview. Sort of related to my many questions about behavioral health is, I know that the county is, you know, a staple for the social safety net in New Mexico, in a place where we don't have much other funds for that social safety net. The county serves as the party. We run the jail, and we have the sheriff's office, and we have so much of the resources around behavioral health. We know that also our budgets rise and fall with oil and gas, with different revenue streams, and how do you plan for, and so that our social safety net, which really is the staple for the whole community, can be sustainable even in times of budget decreases or revenue pitfalls? How would, how do you make sure?
It's a great, great question. I guess the first thing I would say is, the time has passed where governmental entities can be, solve problems on their own. It's really to be affected now, you have to partner. Nobody has the resources to solve homelessness. Nobody has the resources to provide a social service network that deals with a continuum of care that allows people to get networked, get, solve their VA problems, solve their social security disability problems, get stabilized so that they can actually get back into the workforce, permanent supportive housing, whatever it takes to eliminate the barriers for getting back into being a protective member of the community. So, the first place is you have to partner. And fortunately, you have a major jurisdiction here that you work with, and you also have a school district, and you have a university here. When I was in Ashland, I found that the university there, Southern Oregon University, was a great partner. They had problems with homeless on their campus. So, we worked as, in a collaborative way to find ways to deal with providing a network of care, particularly during severe weather events or emergency events. So, partnering is the first thing. Look for partners and find out what you can offer that they need help of from you, and you can do a quid pro quo. As an example, the city of Ashland did not have an emergency operations center. They are in a major urban fire interface that the city next to them burnt down, a third of it burnt down two years before I arrived. And so, fire risk is a major risk for them. But when that fire happened in the neighboring city, everything was chaos. It was our, the city of Ashland firefighters who showed up first, and it advanced so fast that nobody could really respond to it. It just happened. And so, recovery becomes the key issue. We didn't even have an emergency operations center, and the city was never going to be able to afford to build one. So, I partnered with the university. They actually asked if I would actually help pay for their emergency manager, and I said, I got a different idea. How about if I pay 100% for your manager and for my manager, and you provide me a facility? Because I know you've got a facility that you can make this, make available to the community. So, they provided the facility and the utilities. We are upgrading, the city is upgrading the infrastructure in the facilities so it can accommodate a multi-jurisdictional approach to the emergency operations center. And the school district is providing the funding for the joint training. So, we engaged, we also did the same thing in childcare. We found, so partnering, to me, is a huge issue. We just didn't have the resources anymore, and the social security net, services net is just too thin, given all the issues that, we're still dealing with the 2008 housing collapse. And everybody is on the bubble now for losing a home and becoming homeless and having problems. And so, you've got a partner, to me, is the first avenue. The second thing is make sure you understand continuum of care. Where are the gaps? How do you fund them so that if you have to scale up or down, you know how you're going to scale up or down in order to maintain the continuum of care, and people don't fall through the gaps? So, those are my two observations on that.
Thank you. Commissioner Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for all the engagement in these questions here from all the candidates, frankly. My question is really about public safety. To me, you know, we've had a lot of discussion tonight about growth, economic development, you know, kind of conservation versus growth, and you know, you present that false dichotomy. In my district, I kind of see things a little bit differently. We have a lot of, a little bit of infill development going on, but the biggest issue that I see is actually a hollowing out of the development that we've already done along our Central Avenue corridor. We have shuttered businesses, businesses that are struggling to stay open, you know, that are open during the day, but they keep the doors locked, right? Not much of a way to run a business, not much of a way to sort of live in your community. And so, the county is really at this nexus of public safety, and we've got, you know, as any large community does, we've got a very complicated system here, right? We've got many players. The commission may fund the sheriff's department, but we're not in charge of it. Then you've got the Albuquerque Police Department that we don't fund, we're not in charge of, but they provide services to a large portion of the county. How does that all interface with what we do at the county, at the jail, at the youth services center, through our behavioral health programs? And I think that that is, to me, really critical to economic development, is starting to make progress on this hollowing out of our urban core that we're seeing, not just in my district, in our downtown area. Many of these areas that are heavily densified are also seeing their businesses hollowed out, their economic activity is declining, and they're not desirable places for a lot of people to go and walk, shop, live. What's your vision for how we turn the tide on that?
Well, I can, I can only really speak to the experience I have in the city of Austin. When I first joined the city of Austin, the downtown emptied out at 5:00, and a lot of the businesses downtown were boarded up. We had folks sleeping in doorways, surprising for a capital city to have declined that far because of, in their case, a couple of recessions had triggered some issues, and they were, I found the downtown was really in danger. What the city did was really to change the orientation from it just simply being a commercial center to also being a residential center. That means you have a different orientation of the types of businesses. You really have to have neighborhood-supporting businesses. So, they focused on development of housing downtown that could feed off of, that would reinforce the need for neighborhood services, small grocery stores, quick shops, amenities that any, you know, pharmacies, that anybody would have to have. And they turned it into a residential area. That was a totally different focus than they'd ever had before, because it was really just big, big business in the downtown area. The capital, actually, the state drove what really happened to a great degree. Historically, Austin was a government town, a state government town, and a somewhat of an economic center, and then the University of Texas. So, what you have to do is you have to first find a way of anchoring your downtown with a broader part of your community. Don't just focus on what happens during the day, focus on what happens there 24 hours, and try to turn it into a place that attracts activity 24 hours a day. So, you know, driving down the downtown here, you have a very human scale downtown. It's not, it's not, it doesn't have a sort of brutalist feel to it. It's an inviting environment. The question is, how do you make an environment so it brings different activity into the downtown area? And so, that's my one experience in terms of downtown economic development that has worked.
Thank you, Mr. Lassard. And I'm going to pass because I think you've answered so many of the questions that I have burning, and we're at 24 minutes. So, my job is to keep us moving, but thank you very much for your thoughtful responses. I understand we have 12 people who have signed up for public comment, and so, again, I will say that each person has two minutes, and you will be alerted about your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium if you are speaking in person. Before making your statements, please state your name for the record. And to maintain order and decorum and in the spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone, we ask that all speakers adhere to the two-minute timeframe. So, Ms. Gillian, will you please call the names?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, we will start off with Mr. Rudolph Serano, followed by Robert Beatty, followed by Harry Welkin.
Madam Counselor and members of the council, well, it's a hard day for everybody. It's one of those days that you don't want, you know, but like in a soccer team, you know, you have to choose to bring somebody from the team up, you know, and show that you have your own team coming up and build the best, or bring Messi, you know, and just start scoring goals, you know? So, that's, I always say, it's about business, you know, and what's the best business for the county, you know? And I think we'll be losing if, you know, if we don't catch one of those two catches, either or, you know? And experience, you know, in those two oppositions, we have the big lobbying and, you know, that it brings money, which is, you know, money moves mountains. And the experience with unions, because this will shake the unions. If we don't get a law call, we're going to shake the unions, and it's going to be a little shake in the whole county. But if we shake it, then we have to be able to give those races to the unions. And the other one is, Austin is one of the centers of the United States growing up, you know, and it's the new tech things, and it might be an opportunity to make a sister-city business there. So, it's either that side or this side. And I'm trying to, you know, like, to, you know, to the persons that are just looking for a city to bring their new ideas in. And local economy has always been my creed, so whatever is more for the local economy, that's what I will go for. But you guys are the ones deciding, so you got my blessing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Robert Beatty, followed by Harry Welkin, followed by Yolanda Montoya-Cordova, followed by Paul Pino. Harry Welkin?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Harry Welkin, I live in the East Mountains, but I'm a member of the board, the West Central Community Development Group. So, I've been working in metro Albuquerque in the state of New Mexico. It'll be 50 years this October as an attorney, in that, and at times, community developer. I have worked both from the public sector as well as the private sector, from the state land office. And my experience with the Burnley County managers goes back to Juan V. Hill and the creation of the Burnley County Recplex and the, what's now the Isleta Amphitheater, and presently working with your present manager and Mr. Gonzalez on a new studio for the West Side. I've worked both in areas of recreation and preservation of land as well as economic development. And I think you're going to have a tough decision. I'm very impressed with all three of the candidates. You've done a great job whittling down to three, it seems, and a tough job, I'm sure. But I'm here to speak for Marcos because I've had dealings with him over his 12, 15 years in, in the county. And I have found him to be always, always professional, fair, honest, and looking out for the public in the county. That has been on any of my dealings, both from the private sector or from the public sector, that's been my experience with Marcos. And so that's what I just want to impart to you. And I'm pleased to have had an association with the county over all that length of time. Hopefully we've done some good things. But I just want to say thank you, Marcus, for all your work. And I'm very impressed with your other two candidates.
Thank you, sir.
Yolanda Montoya Cordova, Paul Pino, Manny Crispin.
Good evening, Chair Baca and members of the commission. One, I wanted to come and first I have, there's three things I want to say. One, express my gratitude for the opportunity to serve the county. I appreciated being on the committee. And I will say that the slate of candidates that were brought forward were very impressive. And I was, it was, it was difficult, but there was definitely a wonderful response. And I think the three candidates that you all settled on are top-notch. And I think that they're, you know, any one of them, I think, would be a wonderful addition to our, to our city and to help address the concerns that you've all brought up. The second thing I wanted to say, as you're thinking of the selection, is to keep in mind the importance of two critical partnerships that I think, I hope we continue. One is the ABC Community Schools partnership. And the second, as I know near and dear to Commissioner Quesada's heart, is that intergovernmental partnership that includes the city, the county, and Albuquerque Public Schools. When we can partner with the public school system, obviously it's an opportunity to really be close to the ground in terms of what children and families need. And I'd encourage all of the commissioners to really participate in the upcoming events that Albuquerque Public Schools calls forward for engagement with the community because that would give you an opportunity to also hear firsthand in terms of what our children, our families need. And thirdly, I just want to say that in terms of behavioral health, as we're moving forward to and thinking about the new county manager that comes in, I hope that what we also would want to lift up and need to lift up as well are those activities that would also help build resilience for our young people. And so I'm thinking of just the partnerships with young people, led by young people, informed by young people. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Montoya Cordova, and thank you for your service.
Paul Pino, followed by Manny Crispin, followed by Gregory Sealy.
Hello. My name is Paul Pino. I wanted to give you some background from way back on Cindy Chavez because I'm her uncle. And I go, and I mean way back. I've known Cindy since she was born in Alamogordo, New Mexico. I was always impressed ever since she, like, started talking, I think. In my, in my heart and in my, like, my observation, she's, she's always had, like, the biggest IQ and the biggest heart and the smallest ego. I'm just so impressed, impressed by my niece. And I heard from a San Jose constituent who might come up and say something. He said that she was really tough to deal with in, in San Jose, and I've never seen that side of her. But I wanted to tell you the family side and what I've seen since, since, since she was a tyke. Thank you.
Thank you.
Manny Crispin, followed by Gregory Sealy, followed by Richard Gooch.
Good evening, Madam Chair and County Commissioner. My name is Manny Crispin Jr. And I'm here to speak about Marcos Gonzalez and his significant contributions to the Burnaleo County. For those of you that do not know, Marcos currently serves as the Executive Development Officer for Burnaleo County, a role that he's held for the past year and a role that he has taken seriously that he's worked hard for, for over 12 years here at the county. During this time, he's demonstrated exceptional leadership, integrity, and a deep commitment to our community. As Director of Operations, Marcos has been instrumental in overseeing the county's day-to-day functions, ensuring that services are delivered efficiently and effectively and fairly to all residents. And the most important pillar to me is he's done it ethically. His knowledge of local issues here in Burnaleo County and his dedication to public service make him an ideal candidate for the role of county manager. Having a county manager who's from New Mexico like Marcos is crucial. He understands the unique challenges and opportunities that our county faces. His local roots ensure that he is deeply invested in the success and well-being of Burnaleo County. And Marcos has consistently shown that he values transparency, accountability, and ethical governance. These qualities are essential for the role of county manager, which requires making decisions that affect the lives of thousands of residents, nearly a million here in Burnaleo County. During the pandemic, I was particularly impressed. I saw Marcos firsthand helping and excelling in all of his roles and responsibilities. I want to thank you for your time and your consideration. So let's support Marcos Gonzalez for county manager to ensure that the county continues to thrive under strong and ethical leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gregory Sealy, followed by Richard Gooch, followed by David Buchholz.
Good evening, Madam Chair, fellow commissioners. My name's Greg Sealy. I'm a lifelong resident of Burnaleo County. I'm here tonight to give my strongest possible endorsement to Marcos Gonzalez to be our next county manager. I first met Marcos when I retired from the Air Force and went to work for then Congresswoman Deb Holland. As a brand-new staffer on her team, economic development was one of the issues I was assigned to. And so I started running into Marcos at different events around town where I was going to learn about different issues and get briefed on things. And I was really struck right away by just how decent and good a guy he was. He took the time to explain things to me when most other folks couldn't care less who I was. And his, his knowledge was just so incredible because he could connect the dots on so many issues and explain why this and the history of that. And I was just so, the substance that he brought to the table, I was so impressed with. And it's something that I tried to take into that role. Later, when I went to go work for the city of Albuquerque as the federal funding coordinator, I was trying hard to pursue a number of different grants and federal earmarks for the city, some of which I could not catch traction on despite my best efforts. Nonetheless, I was able to collaborate with my friends at the county, Marcos, and I watched him run with some of those projects. And not only was he successful in securing those grants, one of which was the regional infrastructure accelerators that's going to help us build a massively, huge opportunity for development in the I-40 trade pork. But he, he saw the vision of what planting those seeds would be. And those seeds are starting to grow into trees now. And one of the things that I really admire about Marcos is that he shows up, right? He and I regularly attend Economic Forum together. I see him out there, he shakes hands, he knows all of these stakeholders in our community that are trying to make change happen. At the legislature, I saw Marcos when I was briefing a senator and he was up there fighting for resources for Burnaleo County. So that's why I endorse Marcos because he's already fighting for us. Thanks so much.
Richard Gooch, followed by David Buchholz, followed by Peter Kelton.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name's Richard Gooch. And I'm sure I'm the one who told Cindy's uncle that she was a tough negotiator. I think I'm probably the only one here that can speak to Cindy because I've known her for 30 to 35 years. I was born in Santa Fe, raised in Albuquerque, went to UNM Law School and moved to San Francisco. And I started working for Union Pacific Railroad. I handled their real estate. And we had a great deal of excess real estate in San Jose. I partnered up with a developer to build a shopping center and it happened to be in Cindy's district. And it's not fair to say she wears a silk glove and uses a heavy hammer, but she's a, a very visionary in how she handles her negotiations with developers and, and landowners and whatnot. And what she did was she, and, and she told us that it was very important to involve the community, involve labor, and to make the right decisions that would end up serving the community. She understood that the development that we were contemplating would be there for 50 years, 70 years, like our old wind rock, and needed to have a heart to it. And she was able to do that with us. And I will say, although our, our negotiations weren't adversarial, she, she doesn't operate that way. But at the end of the day, I felt like I got everything I needed and I think she got what her constituents needed. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is David Buchholz and I am an attorney in private practice here in Albuquerque. I've been doing that for about 45 years, representing both governments and also development entities. I'm also here in support and will reiterate the comments that were made by others, the candidacy of Marcos Gonzalez in favor of his being appointed county manager. I've worked with Marcos for at least 15 years, both in Santa Fe and then here in Burnaleo County with our development clients. And he has shown significant growth and developed a significant amount of respect in the legal community, the financial community, and the political community. I think Mr. Welkin's comments, comments of others, are those that I would reiterate about his skills, his patience, his transparency, and his ability to deal with differing interests and trying to get things done. I won't take up much of your time, but I wanted to tell one story from my own personal experience that I think may be helpful to you. I came here 45 years ago from the east and I was a stranger to New Mexico. And I had a growth period where I had to understand that the culture of this community, its political culture, its economic culture, its social culture is different than a lot of other places and it takes some learning. I believe with Marcos, you have someone who's already has that learning, can hit the ground running in dealing with the uniqueness of our culture, the uniqueness of our people, and the issues that we'll be facing in your county going forward. I heard the other candidates tonight, I was very impressed with them. And I'm sure you will do well no matter who you pick, but I think if you pick a, a local boy who's done a great job for us, that you will be ahead of the game. You'll have somebody who's really ready to get ready, working for you as soon as he possibly can. It's nice to see everybody. I don't come down to commission very much anymore, but great to see all of you and good luck in your choices.
Thank you, Mr. Buchholz. Good to see you too.
Peter Kelton, followed by Jane Leighton, followed by Mary Ingham.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm Peter Kelton with the Rhodey Law Firm. I've had the pleasure of working with Marcos Gonzalez on many economic development projects. And what I would say is that he has been fair, reasonable, respectful, and resourceful in all of my interactions with him. He has always represented the county's best interests and he's been a great partner for the economic development community. What I will say that I respect most about Marcos is that where many people would identify problems, he focuses on solutions and he executes on those solutions. The county is currently facing a great problem in that you have three fantastic candidates. You cannot go wrong with any of them. But I will say that in my experience, Marcos has been a pleasure to work with and I look forward to continuing to work with him regardless of his role. Thank you.
Jane Leighton, followed by Mary Ingham.
Good evening, Jane Leighton, Los Rancho State Albuquerque, for the record. We are here to speak on behalf and support Cindy Chavez. I'm here with my husband, Ed, and my daughter, Courtney. First of all, Madam Chair, esteemed Commissioners, we, I appreciate the time that you're providing all of us to speak on our candidate. Cindy's came, is coming here from California. We moved back from California. I'm a 12th generation New Mexican, born in Tularosa, raised in Alamogordo. We moved back here by choice in 2007 from San Francisco, so it can be done and you can assimilate into the community. What's, what Cindy brings is a great wealth of knowledge in dealing with ethnic, ethnic diversity and economic diversity. Everybody thinks Santa Clara, San Jose is a very wealthy community. It is very diverse and she brings us that rich background. So I appreciate you allowing me to speak on her behalf. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ingham. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. I'm a pediatric physical therapist by trade. I'm also a candidate for the Burnaleo County Commission District Two in southwest Albuquerque, Mr. Quesada's district. I was at the past commission meeting where there were many comments made about people like me, conservatives, pro-life, Republican, patriotic. As a candidate, I did not feel welcome to be a part of a commission serving all the citizens of the county. The comments offended or alienated half of the population of Burnaleo County. Those attitudes only serve to divide the citizens of the county rather than working together to accomplish goals and provide needed services for our families, citizens, and we, the people. As Mr. Lazard commented, we need to partner together. So I encourage the new county manager candidates to help us in the process of growing together, not apart. I am praying that God will bless this process and help us to find the leader that he chooses. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment. Thank you.
Thank you all and thank you all for being here. We truly appreciate all of these comments and questions from the commission. I guess what I would like to do now is offer each of you a, a two-minute close and Gillian will use the little timer. We'll, we'll be a little flexible, but we'd like you to each make a closing statement for us. So we'll, we'll start again with Ms. Chavez.
Thank you so much and thank you for having such a public process. And it was great to hear all of the feedback that we got from the community and especially my uncle and my cousin. You know, what, what I wanted to, I wanted to just say in closing that I believe deeply in local government. And the reason I believe so much in it is that I think when you get sometimes to the state and federal levels, it's so big that people can't see themselves in it. They, they don't feel their values reflected in it, they don't feel at home in it. But local government is a way for us to, I believe, while we have such big divisions in our nation right now, to help people fall back in love with their communities, help people fall back in love with each other, and help build healthy environments for communities to thrive in. And I, I wanted to just give two examples. When COVID-19 hit, I happened to be Chair of the Board of Supervisors. And at that time, you'll remember how afraid people were about everything, what they touched, who they sat next to. And we had an uproar in our community because all of our cities wanted information and everybody was sort of fighting over where vaccines were going to go and how were we going to execute. And so I got a letter, an angry letter, signed by every mayor in the city saying to me, we want vaccine, I mean, I'm sorry, testing at that time. We, we need your attention. So what I did is I pulled every city manager and every mayor together every Saturday to meet with the health officer and, and the police chiefs and anybody else who people needed information from. It didn't matter what political side we were on. What mattered is that we all had one goal and that was keeping everybody alive. And it was painful and hard and challenging. We had wildfires, we had heat waves, we had the census, you remember, was being called all and on and off, but together we were able to thrive. And I want to do that here. I really want to do that here. I really want to do that here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Mr. Gonzalez.
Never done the timer before. Well, one, Madam Chair and members of the Commission, thank you for hosting this community forum to learn more about the candidates for the manager position. The county manager is responsible for bridging the Commission's vision and articulating that vision to 2,600 employees. By focusing on structure, equity, and fostering a culturally competent workforce, I will lay the groundwork for a strong organizational culture that prioritizes fairness, diversity, and productivity. As county manager, this is how I will instill a work culture. It allows us to be that model county and best serves our constituents, communities, and businesses. By effectively promoting the county's outstanding qualities, I will elevate County, Burnaleo County, to reinforce its reputation as a leader in innovation, fiscal responsibility, and service excellence. Uh, I'm deeply, um, invested in addressing the challenges of our community faces, and I believe that effective leadership is crucial in overcoming these obstacles. My extensive experience in, um, budget management, political navigation, planning and zoning, public works, behavioral health, and environmental sustainability, coupled with all my years here at Burnaleo County, uniquely positions me, uh, to serve and as a county manager role. So I have a proven record in committing to do that. And the main reasons of really wanting to continue to do this is that my family has lived in New Mexico for over 16 generations. I'm doing this for my daughter, who will be born later th, this month. And I want to make changes for our community that have long-lasting impact for the future of gen, of generations. So I'm very eager to take on the role of county manager and partner with many of our public, private, and governmental partners to make our community better because we have that opportunity to meet the model county. And thank you for allowing us to share our vision and our aspirations for the county, and I look forward to next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Lassard.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to recap. And I, I just have to say, I'm really disappointed that the four busloads of supporters didn't make it. I guess they ran out of gas somewhere. So I'll try to handle it on my own here. This is a big job. Your budget is $1.2 billion. Your general fund is half a billion. Your special revenue, uh, funds total up a half a billion dollars. Your capital program is over, what, uh, $1.336 million a year. You have somewhere in the range of, uh, and I hear, I hear a lot of different numbers, but somewhere between, uh, 2,500 to 2,900 employees, depending on how many positions are filled at any particular moment. It's not a job for the faint of heart, so you've got some strong folks here that are willing to step up to take on that task. Uh, I think what I bring is an appreciation for what that takes. I've worked in large and small organizations. I've worked in economic development, I've worked in the capital side, uh, I've worked in budgeting, um, and I've worked with a variety of different types of, of governing boards, uh, some that have got along fine, and some that didn't get along fine. So I understand the dynamics, that the difference is opinion, that can help unite, uh, and, uh, also separate. And I think that there's, uh, that quite often disagreement is, is a way of, of, uh, uniting. Because when you can, when the community can raise a lot of different point, voices, a lot of different points of view, then you can find the common ground. That's, it's, it's that approach that really brings people together. The process itself is important. Generally, I think that there are three things that a, a senior executive has to understand. One, you have to understand the finance and budgeting of anything you're doing, uh, and how to deal with the complexity of it. Secondly, you have to deal with the legal issues that you're dealing with. And third, you have to deal with the practical reality of what it is you're trying to do, what, uh, on, on the business side. The legal side, you can get advice from your, your county attorney or your city attorney or the, or your legal experts, uh, that can help you lead to, work through the issues. You have financial resources or staff that'll help you with it. Shirley is here, I think. She, I'm sure she's going to keep everybody on track here. But the business side is the side that is the hardest side to understand. If you have not dealt with a variety of topics, the first time you run into an emergency operation, uh, what is your legal authority? What, how aggressive can you be? What, uh, how do you actually address that? When you have a higher, oh, a, a rain bomb or a, uh, a, a, a fire event, how do you, how do you know how to deal with an emergency event? How do you know how to deal with a budget crisis, a deficit? How do you understand what the procurement process is? How do you know how to, to drill down into an operational, come up, understand the specifics as well as the general strategic so that you can connect the dots for a sustainable solution? That's been my experience, um, and that's really what I have to offer to, to the county. I, I think you have a tough decision. I thank you for the opportunity. This has really been quite an experience. Uh, you've got a great community, a wonderful quality of life place for people to live and do business and raise their families, and I would really enjoy being a part of your community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lassard. And just in closing, I'd like to thank the three candidates. Thank you for coming today. Thank you for your open and honest discussion and, and answering our questions. And again, I, I would thank the community, um, for coming out today. Um, we, we truly appreciate it. We will have a, an informal reception out in the lobby with bizcochitos and, and coffee or lemonade. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I wanted to make a quick statement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And it could be after you close the meeting, it's no big deal. I just wanted to make a public statement saying that since we've been involved in this process, no one's asked if they're a Republican or a Democrat. And I just wanted to publicly say that, that is not what we're up here doing at all. Our job is to make sure that we get the right person for the job. It's not a party, there's not a party line up here when it comes to that. So I just wanted to make a public statement on that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Please join us for some bizcochitos.